Good morning and welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for August 6th. It's 10:30, I'm sorry, 10:13 and we're going to accept the opportunity for anybody to make public comment at this time for items not appearing on today's agenda and do so by just unmuting yourself and you can speak your mind. We'll give that opportunity at this point. Seeing no one here for public comment for items not on the agenda, we'll accept public comment for items that do appear on the agenda when they're under discussion. Moving on with the agenda, we do not have any minutes from our meeting. We're going to be considering those at a future meeting. So again, next week we'll be considering approving of those minutes. We are going to be starting with our personnel items. Do we have anybody on the line from the Children and Youth Services office to discuss these items? Okay, hearing none. We do want to note that we have the consideration of the approval of two appointments. One is for caseworker two, and that's Lisa Reisenberg. We also have the appointment of Catherine Black as caseworker one. Both of these would be effective August 17th. So we'd look for a motion to approve both those items.
Motion to approve the two appointments for the Children and Youth Department.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. At this time for our Conservation District items, we'll turn the floor over to Jim Coslow. Good morning, Jim.
Good morning. Thank you. For Conservation District, there are two items for you this morning. The first one is the recommendation for Dana Beckstrand to be promoted from Nutrient Management Technician One to Nutrient Management Technician Two. Our Technician Two position was recently vacated with the retirement of John Wadhah, and I'm recommending the internal promotion of Dana to fill that position. She has experience and the proper certifications and will provide a very smooth transition into that position. So I'm recommending that be filled at a Step 14 Q, which I think is the equivalent of a 2% increase for her salary.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Any feedback questions for Jim on this?
Yeah, this is Steve. I've had the opportunity to work with Dana for a number of years and she's, as Jim indicated, very competent and certainly duly qualified to take over what I would consider a critical position in the Conservation District. So I would strongly support this.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. All right, we look then for a motion.
Motion to approve the promotion change in title for Dana Beckstrand in the Conservation District.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion is carried. And then we need to take another action here then with that successful completion, Jim. So we'll turn it back to you.
Yep, thank you. The second item is to fill the position vacated by Dana, our Nutrient Management Technician One position.
Okay, thanks, Jim. We look for a motion for this.
Motion to approve the personnel requisition for a full-time Nutrient Management Technician One for the Conservation Department.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Jim, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, for our non-personnel items today, we do have one, which is a contract with Qualtrics. And we do have Mary Kay Williams on the line with us. Mary Kay, do you want to kick this off?
Actually, I believe Chad's on the line too, Mike, since he's worked on the contract.
Okay, all right.
Mary Kay, you're muted.
Thank you. So I'll just say that I've been working with Chad on the project and he has introduced us to Qualtrics and it seems like a really great solution for us. So I'm going to turn that over, this process over to Chad Joyce.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, so Qualtrics is a data collection and analysis tool that we're looking for consideration and approval today. That will be used for the County Relief Block Grant application. The length of the contract is for one year for $6,600. This will really allow us to have a robust data collection process and analysis of the applications.
Okay, thank you, Chad. Any feedback questions, comments for Chad?
Yeah, thanks for the work on this, Chad, on very short notice.
You bet.
Okay, hearing no further feedback or questions, we'd look for a motion.
Motion to approve the contract with Qualtrics that will be used with the County Relief Block Grant application. Contract total $6,600.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay, before we get into the, thank you, Chad, very much. Before we get into the CDBGCV conversation, Commissioner Higgins, you had sent an email out to us requesting an item be added to the agenda. It was sent out yesterday. Did you want to add some context to that before we look for a motion to add it to the agenda?
Sure, I was contacted by a group that's putting on a bicycle event. I think it may end in Center County, but it's mostly taking place in some of the surrounding counties. I believe they just need to check off a box that the local county commissioners are aware of the event and that our EMA department has been notified. I believe they're expecting a maximum of about 200 participants. So it does meet the current green phase requirements.
Okay, so we could add it to the agenda for further discussion and deliberation. Commissioner, if you'd want to make that motion?
Sure. Motion to add discussion and recognition of a local cycling event to today's agenda.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay, so yeah, we received the email last night. I'm just looking through it as well, Mark. But what does it look like they're asking specifically?
They need us to sign off that they notified us is pretty much what they're looking for.
Okay, yeah, your email attachment that they sent over, was there, was there anything specific on the attachment?
Not really. They just described the event, which is primarily taking place on back and gravel roads on the Buffalo Valley Rail Trail and the Bald Eagle State Forest. They will occasionally have to cross municipal roads, but I believe they've made arrangements with the fire police in all of the appropriate townships. I believe they're going to be assisted by the Milheim, Union County West End, and Mifflinburg Volunteer Fire Companies. I believe the event crosses trails in Union, Mifflin, and Center Counties.
I think that just by us taking action, we, our minutes should indicate that we're now, if they don't require any formal paperwork, then I would just send them a copy of our minutes that we've, you know, we approved it as an action at one of our board meetings and we understand that their presence is noted.
Yeah, I'm trying to double check to see if that will satisfy what they're looking for. It just might. Margaret, did you have any thoughts on the event or the paperwork required?
As presented to me, it looked as if there was a checkoff or some sort of confirmation that you needed to provide to them by August the 10th. So as you said, I think that suffices because it indicates that in fact our county commissioners, Board of Commissioners is aware. And I don't think there's any liability for the county involved. Just it's, we're signing off on awareness of the event and that's what our minutes should reflect.
Yeah, so I think you've nailed it. There's a bold section here. It says, "For purposes of the DCE and our permit, reply by email with your name, organization, and title and state that you've received and understood the information." And you're right, just as long as it's backed by the 10th. So soon as minutes are available, I can reply to their email and say, "Here's the information you were looking for. We are aware of it. We did discuss it." And I'll make sure to CC our EMA department. Think they're already aware, but just to cover.
Okay, so we have discussed it. We have understood they're holding the event and we understand that they are abiding by all DCNR guidelines and DOH guidelines. And so we have, we have hereby understood they're holding the event.
Excellent, thanks.
Okay. All right, going through, back to the discussion item with the Community Development Block Grant, specifically the, not to be confused with the CRBG, but this is the CDBG COVID-19 portion of the CDBG grant. And we wanted to have a discussion about this today because we are going to be having a public meeting on August 11th regarding this. And we just wanted to make sure that we're all aware of what's occurring here. So we have on the line with us Ray Stalinas, but we also have some folks from SEDACOG who we've recently contracted with to partner with us on future Community Development Block Grant projects. And so Ray, we'll turn it over to you and for some overview and then we can provide some feedback.
Sure, thank you, Michael. And good morning. We are planning and have advertised for the public hearing next Tuesday, which is the second public hearing as part of the requirements of allocating dollars towards CDBGCV funds. Our first public hearing was held back on May 14th. There was a deadline with the, with the projects that were recommended for allocation. There are specific rules that govern how those CDBG dollars are allocated towards different projects. So we provided the commissioners with a list of recommended amounts for allocated projects and those will be discussed today and then further discussed at the public hearing on Tuesday. With our, on behalf of Bellefonte Borough, we'll also have projects separately allocated from the CDBGC. So we have a list that entails emergency service assistance, Center Volunteers in Medicine, Center Safe, Center County Rent Mortgage and Utility Assistance Program, then small business assistance, and lastly administrative costs for both Center County and SEDACOG to run the CV program for that. Deadline will be August 31st for the application, which SEDACOG is helping us prepare. That's basically my overview of where we're at. And if I missed anything, I think Mitzi could probably jump in and fill in the gaps where I may have missed an item.
I think you did good, Ray. You covered it all.
Okay, thank you, Ray. So just in turn, and welcome, Mitzi. Thank you for joining the call today. It's good to see you again. How are you?
Good to see you too. Thank you. I'm well.
Good. So to understand this, so we have a list that was generated back in May with recommendations. Is that currently what we advertised for the second public hearing, essentially saying, "Here's what we are planning on allocating the funds towards. We'd like feedback on that." Is that, is that what's happened?
Yes, the, it's called a notice, final notice for your final public hearing. And we went off of Matt's list when we engaged and just went through with his allocation amounts and advertised that as these are the projects at this amount. And then the final hearing you hold to again review this and allow citizen comment.
Okay, thank you. So if we would want to make changes to that list, how, when and how can we do that?
Now, during your Board of Commissioners meeting, you want to discuss what changes you would want to make. And then we would again bring it up during the final hearing because right now is your public comment period.
Okay, so once we, so since this is going to be happening next Tuesday, we would not be able to make change, we can't make changes at that meeting?
Not technically. Technically now you need to do it during your public comment period because on the 11th would be your final hearing and DCD would frown upon any changes being made at that point.
Okay, all right, thank you. So in terms of the administrative allowance, so my feedback to this, generally speaking, to my fellow commissioners was, I think we would want to try to reduce the amount of things that were, the different pots we're putting this in. And initially I was supportive of just saying, "Let's take all this money and just give it to the emergency services, our EMS folks across the county," with the exception again of State College and Borough and Bellefonte Borough being direct recipients of CDBG. However, that is capped at 30% of the total amount that we receive. So we can only do $40,875. So that's sort of taken care of. The, the challenge with the CVIM and the Center Safe is I believe that they've received some, they applied for both this, this CDBG program and they also applied for the Center Foundation's Action Fund in which they received some funding through the Center Foundation for these two, these two purposes. So I think it's necessary for us to pull them out because again, they've already received some funding for those projects. Then for the Shelter and Food Services, the Food Services, I think we may be able to keep on there. I think, I think Food Services is probably a high priority. But in terms of the shelter, we have the mortgage and rent, or I should say the Rental Assistance Program that our Adult Services Office is doing. But I don't know if we need to do as much on the shelter side of things for that again because, and again, this was done in May. A lot of things have happened since then. We've gotten the $2.3 million and I think it would make sense to churn through that and not, I mean, if you think about $2.3 million versus $25,000. And then the last one is Direct Assistance to Small Businesses located in Center County. Again, with the exception of the Borough State College and the Borough of Bellefonte as CDBG direct recipients. So my suggestion would be to, if we can, Mitzi, do the administrative allowance. And I mean, I would even love to see the administrative allowance taken out of that or reduced heavily by that if we could. And I believe that the contract that you put together actually has that a lot less, I want to say. So I'll jump, I'll jump back to that question. But I'd be supportive of reducing the administrative allowance to what you had it on, what you, what your, the contract with SEDACOG looked like, doing the 30% maximum for the Direct Assistance to the EMS, and then all the other funds would be put into foods, food pantries and food service or, yeah, food pantries. So that would probably total close to about 100,000, 110,000. So that was my suggestion, recommendation. But are you, so what is the total amount that SEDACOG is contracted with specifically for the C, for the CDBGCV administration?
That is the 1606. That was our contract, our professional services agreement with Center County.
Okay, thank you. So, so then that would mean that we have 13,300 to reallocate to other light items. So I, so essentially, if we, and again, let me, so that's one question, thank you. And then the second question is, the urgent need for EMS folks versus the urgent need for food pantries, are we not capped by urgent or by allocating money to food pantries?
There's two questions there. Your urgent need totality is 30%. So if you want to do an urgent need project or projects, you're still capped at 30% of your total allocation. So that is your $40,875. Our discussions with DCD, and we just had a webinar yesterday, you get into what's called duplication of benefits where there's other funding sources out there. And DCD is hearing and telling us that food pantries are already being funded by various other funding sources. So they're, they're not looking at funding them with your CV funds.
Okay, so DCD is essentially saying that when we say, "Provide food pantry assistance as may be needed over the next two years," they would not be supportive of that?
Correct. They're saying that USDA is directly funding the food pantries. Then you get into duplication of benefits because with your CDBG money, you cannot fund the program if it's already being funded by another source. And USDA is funding food pantries. The only program that DCD is allowing use of CDBGCV funding for, for food would be a Meals on Wheels program, which would be direct assistance mainly to like the elderly.
Okay. Direct need and non-direct need. Could we do a non-direct need project or non-direct need allocation to EMS?
No, because your EMS gets into your whole urgent need. And the other thing that you have an issue with is you had your first hearing, so you're kind of limited to any projects that were discussed during the first hearing. You can't add projects that were not discussed during your first hearing.
Okay. So, okay, my memory's not that sharp. I'd have to go, I think we'd have to go back to look at what we discussed. I can't remember if we talked about everything that could be discussed or everything that was requested during that. Okay, so small business assistance, that would not be an urgent need?
Correct, because the, it's going to have to go through an entire application process with businesses applying. There is a plethora of information that DCD provided with how to do, how to qualify businesses. So it's, it's like an intake process where the businesses have to come in, they have to show that they're a microbusiness, that they have five or less employees, they're going to have to prove a low to moderate income status, they're going to have to prove their need based on COVID. It's an entire long process for the, to qualify through the business, but it is, would be direct assistance and based on the LMI criteria of low moderate income.
Okay, and just out of curiosity, if somebody would apply, if we would create that program, even if it's at the total amount of $30,000 as it stands now, how long would it take? Would you estimate for businesses to actually receive funding?
We're hopeful that DCD gets contracts by October and then the intake process, the application process, I would say you could streamline that to about a month and then funds to them probably by December.
Okay. Looking at the, I'm looking just here. Utilities, we talked about utilities in this, others, other human service needs for utilities or any other counties you're working with doing anything for utilities? Because rent's one thing, but, but in terms of if somebody is living somewhere where they're still paying utilities, is that a consideration at all?
Yes, DCD does allow that. And several of the other communities I'm working in, it's actually one program, rent, mortgage, or utility payments. And DCD will allow that for a low moderate income eligible household for up to three months of payment. A lot of the moratoriums are ending very shortly if they income qualify someone that needs rental assistance or if their homeowner needs mortgage assistance and also utility payments. And that would be water, sewer, broadband payment they're allowing for. They see that as a need, electric payment and gas or oil payment.
And again, how long would it take if we would fund that, just at whatever amount? How long would it take to get that into the hands of residents?
Again, I think by December, as long as DCD gets those, the contracts out to us and they're, we're hopeful that they will in October. So doing the income intake process and then actually getting the funding out, I would, I would be hopeful by December.
Okay. All right. And just to my fellow board members, what I'm trying to do is I'm just trying to appreciate the fact that we have projects that have already been funded in here. We have an administrative allowance that's higher than it should be. And we may have some duplication when it comes to already having shelter provided for with rental assistance. And we are going to be, we're going to be, you know, providing many multimillion dollars to businesses. And in addition to all that, this, this assistance wouldn't be coming until December. It sounds like, Mitzi, anything we do that's not urgent need is going to be December.
Even urgent need because you still can't spend money until you have a contract from DCD.
So even, did I, so you said that even urgent need is not, is not going to be here till December?
You may get it in November, but again, until you get a contract and then you have to have subrecipient agreements. So you might get it a little earlier because you don't have to do the whole income intake qualifying someone as LMI. It's not going to be, you still have to go through the whole process. DCD reviews your application and go to contract, then you do your subrecipient agreements.
Okay, I'll, I'll say this and then I'd love to get other feedback as well from Commissioner Higgins and Dershowen. But I do think that we do need to change some of the parameters of the funding. And we do have a Commissioners meeting on Tuesday at 10:00 AM. But that, would that, would that meeting, if we would make changes or amendments, would that still be allowable prior to the final public hearing at 7:00 PM?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So I'll end there for now and welcome any other feedback or comments.
I'm in complete agreement with you, Michael.
Okay, Commissioner Higgins?
I agree. We need to kick this back to primarily human services staff, have them take another look at it, reallocate some of the pots of money. I'm looking at a document I think that Ray emailed out on the 8th of June that's titled, "Request Comments for Use of Center County Entitlement CDBG-CV Funds." I'm assuming it's the same document you were looking at, Mike?
He had, I think the document has not changed. It is, and again, Ray can speak to this, but I believe, Ray, you sent that out again on very recently, correct?
That's correct. Yep. That was a result of the first public hearing. It was a It was a synopsis of all the options that we can look at for funding allocations.
Yeah, so Mark, that was Monday at 4 o'clock.
Monday?
Yeah, 4:17.
4:17. Okay. Yeah, it's, 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 it's the same document. Okay. So we're, we're looking at the same document. So my concern for human services staff is if we end up putting all of this money into utility assistance, I, I don't want us leaving anything on the table. You know, if we have $100,000 or whatever it is for utility assistance and it turns out that despite our best efforts, we only have applications for half of that. Mitzi, can we reallocate the money or once we've had the final public hearing, once it's in a particular bucket, it has to stay there?
You can reallocate it at a later time. So when you go through this process and you submit your application, you can always, just like with your regular CDBG, you can move it to, you can modify it and add a project. You can move it within the projects that you fund and it's just a modification or a budget revision.
All right. So I'm mostly in agreement with Commissioners Pipe and Dersham. But I would like direct assistance to small business to stay in there. If you need to reduce the amount, that might be okay. But I just want us to have that placeholder in there. So if whatever other buckets we set up don't end up, the money doesn't end up being spent, that we could reallocate any unspent monies towards assistance for the micro businesses.
And we actually are recommending that you go ahead because of the way Matt had this all set up and what was discussed during the first hearing to stay in line with the DCD guidelines. Go ahead and fund the way that the notice was posted and then you can modify later. You can get rid of programs if they're already funded, if you run into duplication of benefits. But because of the timing and, and that you've already had your first hearing, the second hearing's underway and the applications do the 31st. That is what we recommend. And then you later on, after you have your contract, do modifications or revisions.
May I ask a question? Commissioner Pipe, may I ask a question? Mitzi, just for clarification purposes, we're planning, the Board of Commissioners is planning to earmark a large portion of our county relief block grant funds for small businesses. Can you talk about the relationship between that program and what you're talking about for the small business, the micro businesses? Is there any overlap that we should be aware of or concerned about?
I'm not real familiar with the CRBG because that's a different department at, at CEDOCOG. But this micro business assistance program within the CDBGCV, ECD has pretty much streamlined the process, provided all the documentation, the financial underwriting guidelines. So it is to help small, micro businesses, five or less employees and hit that LMI, low to moderate income. It's for various, various different things to assist businesses with within that low moderate income. I think your CRBG funding, from what little bit I know, allows you to help the businesses, larger businesses, more than five employees and more directly than what the CV money can. And it cannot pay for payroll. That is the one thing that it cannot pay for because you get into duplication of benefits. The both programs, you can't be providing payroll assistance since there already was funding that provided payroll assistance. I don't know, my acting director was on the line. She's much more familiar with CRBG than I am. I don't know if she's still with us. If so, Terry, you may want to talk a little bit to be able to answer their question because I don't know about CRBG.
Thanks, Mitzi. We can talk further about it. We're just very conscious of making sure that we aren't duplicating our funding efforts. And so it sounds like there, this is a different pathway, but thought it was important to at least distinguish the, between the two.
Right. This program with CDBGCV funding is very, very limited because you have to help those low moderate income employees and businesses.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So to round things out, here, here's what my suggestion would be. Appreciating what you're saying, Mitzi, about not doing too much, changing around here. But I would suggest that the board today would take action to amend the amounts. We'd keep everything there, but we'd amend the amount slightly just to save us some backs, just to save you all some work on doing amendments and everything with the state, which would be to take the admin to 16,600, which would be what would be in the contract, to reallocate the 13,300 from that total to the small business fund. Small business fund then would become $43,300. We would then keep the EMS at where it's at, $40,875. From reviewing the action fund and the grants that were given out, Center Safe would stay at 15,000. They, they were awarded for a different project. They could still get funding for their children access center. But CVIM was awarded $10,000 from that fund to do some IT support. So I would suggest taking this down to $10,000 for CVIM and then reallocating the $10,000 from CVIM, the Shelter Food Bank or Shelter and Food Services, which would make that $35,377, which would again, keep the total amount the same. But again, it would just save, save, save some work on the backend. So that would be my suggestion to the board.
We actually already had moved that and that line is 35,377. The information we had from Ray was that Center Safe had received $5,000. So we had taken that to 10,000. And then Matt had a $5,000 discrepancy in there somewhere. So you ended up with an extra 10,000. So we put it in the Center County Rent Mortgage Assistance. So that actually in the final notice was at 35,377. And the Center Safe was at 10,000.
Okay. I don't have a copy of the final notice. I just have a copy of the document that Ray had provided. But, um, so again, you would have Shelter Food Bank under my suggestion at 40,000 then or 35?
It's in your notice at 35, but if you're going to change your Center Volunteers in Medicine to 10, that's going to give you 10,000 to move somewhere.
Okay, so that would be, that'd be 45,000.
Okay.
That would be my suggestion. Mark or Steve, any thoughts on this?
It, it sounds very reasonable to me, Mike, especially if later, depending on demand, we can move the numbers around a little bit. That's fine.
Work for me.
I just want to go over real quick from the final notice and then with your suggestions. The Emergency Services Assistance Program would be 40,875. Yes.
Sorry, I think Commissioner Dersham was going to add something just briefly, if you care. Sorry.
I'm good.
Are you good, Steve? Sorry. I thought, I thought I heard you there. Sorry. Sorry, Mitzi. Go ahead.
That's okay. So the Emergency Services Assistance Program, 40,875. Center Volunteers in Medicine, 10,000. Center Safe, 10,000. Center County Rent Mortgage Utility Assistance Program, you want to change that to just utility? Is that correct?
Uh, no, I, I had not suggested utility.
Okay, you're going to leave it rent mortgage utility. That would go to $45,377. The Small Business Assistance Program will then be $43,300. CEDOCOG Administration, 16-6, and then remove Center County Administration.
Correct. Right. Correct.
Okay.
Uh, let's, if we're, if we can make it official, is there, would there be a motion to, to approve those amendments to this CDBGCV program?
Motion to approve the amendments to the Center County Entitlement CDBG-CV program.
Second.
We moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Really appreciate that. And Mitzi, one of the things, and again, I know you're in a tight timeframe to turn this around, but I think it'd be terrific if we could, because I, my understanding is that there's going to be a second round of this. We think.
We have not heard that yet.
Oh, you said you haven't heard that?
No, we have not heard that they're going to add another round of CDBG. Maybe different funding sources, but we have not heard there's going to be another round of CDBGCV yet.
Or maybe another allotment. That was my understanding from CCAP was that they were going to be providing another allotment. If that's wrong, that's wrong. But we, but we do know that there will be another CDBGE, correct? We're going to get, we're going to get that on an annual basis.
Single entitlement. Right. Yes.
If it would be possible, I think it'd be terrific to do from a start to finish the process of all this. Just so that we could have that appreciation of when we need to do amendments, when we need to do changes. I think that would be helpful. We've always, we would always see Matt coming in to discuss things, but we really never gave that, had that full rainbow of where we were at things. I think that'd be really helpful and terrific. If CEDOCOG could provide that, that, I think that, that would be excellent.
It would be our pleasure. We certainly, certainly can set that up.
Okay, thank you. All right. Well, we will see you then Tuesday, Mitzi. Appreciate it again.
Thank you.
Very much. Thank you. Okay, returning to the agenda, anything else to come before the board before we look to adjourn? Margaret, is there anything else we need to cover before we adjourn?
No, other than just to remind people, we have a work session on our county relief block grant scheduled for this afternoon at 3 o'clock. That would be it.
Okay, thank you, Margaret. At 10:55, would there be a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn at 10:55.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.